Good evening. Good evening, and welcome to the meeting of the Harwich Board of Appeals on this date of September 29, 2021. We're opening at 7:00 PM. The purpose of this meeting is to hear and decide applications before the Board of Appeals, which have been brought pursuant to the bylaw of the town of Harwich and the Massachusetts Zoning Enabling Act. I'm going to ask the board members to identify themselves, please.
Al Donahue.
James Armstrong.
Dave Ryer.
Ryan Sullivan.
Tim Bailey.
David Nunley.
Joe Beasley.
And I want to welcome, we have two new associate members, Dave Nunley and Joe Beasley. Welcome to the board, gentlemen. Tonight, for all those out there, because I'm only going to say it once, the voting members are going to be Mr. Armstrong. Now, where's my, I'm already confused. Mr. Donahue, me, Mr. Sullivan, and Mr. Bailey. Since Mr. Nunley and Mr. Beasley, this is the first meeting, we're not going to make them vote tonight, but they will be able to ask questions of any of the applicants. So with those preliminaries, I will ask Mr. Donahue to call our first case, please.
Case 2021-43. Francis M. Redo.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, what about case 38?
Can I read that one there first?
Oh, that's right, we were going to do that first, I'm sorry.
Yep, you're right, go ahead. Trustee of sale loft road nominee trusts through their agent William, Attorney William Crowe has applied for special permit to construct an addition above the garage of pre-existing nonconforming, single-family residence. The applicant is pursuant to the code of the town of Howard, 32554, Table 2. Area regulation as set forth in MGL Chapter 48, Section 6, or Chapter 8, 48, Section 10, the property is located at 6th Sale Loft, MAP 7, Parcel D27, located RH1 in the zoning district.
Their representative, Attorney Crowe, has given me a copy of an email whereby the applicant has requested that they be permitted to withdraw this petition without prejudice, and since they're coming back again within the next three months, they expect that we not make them pay an additional filing fee. So I will move that we let the applicant in case 2021-43 withdraw their petition without prejudice, and that we will credit them with the $315 filing fee, so they will not have to pay an additional filing fee when they return. Could I have a second on that motion, please? Okay, second, Jamie? Any discussion by the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, this is all granted? Okay, Al, sorry.
Case number 2021-38, Douglas R. Wheeler, trustee of the Douglas R. Wheeler revocable trust through his agent, Cannon Healy of the BSC Group, has applied for special permit on an alternative variance to remove an existing uncovered stoop to replace it with entry porch or pre-existing, nonconforming, single-family dwelling. The applicant is pursuant to the code of the town of Howard, 325, Table 2. Area regulation set forth in MGL Chapter 48, Section 6, or Chapter 8, 4010. The property is located at 16 Valley Road, MAP 101, Parcel X8-216, in the RL zoning district.
Okay, sir, if you could please identify yourself and then present your application.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board for the record. My name is Kieran Healy, and I'm representing the owners of the property, Douglas Wheeler Revocable Living Trust, Mr. Wheeler, trustee. As you've mentioned, we are looking to replace an existing stoop with an enclosed porch. The existing stoop is five feet 10 inches wide by three foot 10 deep, and we're looking to have a porch roof that will be seven foot six by four foot three. The area of the new porch meets the setback from the street. The primary reason we're here is because of the lot coverage that's allowed on the site. If you look at my numbers on the top right-hand side of my plan, you will see that we're allowed 15%. The current building is 15.1%, and with this new entry stoop, it would go up to 15.3%. It is a one-story stoop, and, sorry, one-story porch, and it's purely some sort of way for the owners of the property to partially get out the rain as they come into the building before they go get into the main house itself. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. I did highlight on some of the plans, the area of the stoop, just to make it a little bit easier to see. It's kind of small in what we're looking for, but by the same token, it's very important to the owners of the property, and I hope that we'll be able to go forward on it. I'd be glad to answer any questions the board may have.
All right, thank you, sir. Jamie?
I don't have any questions.
Al?
No, I have no questions.
The only comment I'm going to make is I don't think we'll need a parking, a construction time restriction, I think between the parking at the property and also, it's kind of not a through street, and it's pretty quiet. I think if there are vehicles on the road, it won't be an issue with this property. There were quite a few there on the road that day when I went through. Brian?
I would agree with your assessment on the parking, but I have no further questions.
Tim?
I have no questions.
Dave?
No questions.
Joe?
No questions.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this petition, either for in favor or against? Hearing no one, I'll move to close the public hearing. Second?
I'll move.
Al, second? Any discussion by the board? All in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye. Public hearing is now closed. I will take a motion on the case.
Case number 2021-38, Douglas R. Wheeler, trustee of the Douglas R. Wheeler revocable trust through their agent, Cannon Healy and the BSC Group, has been granted a special permit by the zoning board of appeals to, let's see, to remove existing uncovered stoop and replace it with an entry porch in a pre-existing, nonconforming, family dwelling. Application pursuant to the code of the town of Howard, 325, Table 2. Area regulation set forth in MGL Chapter 48, Section 6. The property is located at 16 Pleasant Valley Road, MAP 101, Parcel X8-216, in RL zoning The property, as the chairman said, appears to be a relatively low-travel street, so there seems to be sufficient room on the property, so during the life of this, it is a condition of the approval of this violation of the terms and the conditions of the specific special permit may be enforced as violation of Howard zoning bylaw pursuant to MGL Chapter 48, Section 7, and Howard zoning bylaw, as these may be amended from time to time.
Can I have a second on that motion, please? Okay, second by Brian, discussion? I mean, I think the project's going to intensify one or more existing nonconformities, it's going to not create any new nonconformity, certainly not going to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure, and so I feel it meets the requirements of the bylaw, the Gale case, and the Deidrick case, and the board is certainly on solid ground to grant the special permit. Anyone else? All in favor of granting a special permit? Aye?
Aye.
All right, special permit granted. Unanimously.
Thank you, members.
Thank you.
You want this?
I'll take this.
Tucelli Life Estate have applied for special permit to add an existing deck on a pre-existing nonconforming, single-family dwelling. The applicant is pursuant to the code of the town of Howard, 325, Table 2. Area regulation is set forth in MGL Chapter 48, Section 6. The property is located at 15 Helena Ave., MAP 14, Parcel A16-8, located in the RM/CV zoning district.
Could the applicant come to the table, please, and identify yourselves and present your petition?
Thank you, my name is Vin Camilio, and this is my wife, Marilyn. We reside at 15 Helena Ave., and we have owned that property for 42 years. Also, we have been to this COVID appeals a few times. For the past two years, entertainment has been an outside activity, and as a result, we are looking to take our elongated deck that exists now and add a 15 by 15 deck, same materials and same setbacks. The one setback that is a problem is the one to the east side. The present deck is 11.1 feet to the property line on the east, and the deck that we wish to add will have the same setback. The setbacks to the south, 45 feet or more, and to the west, 35 feet or more, so those are in compliance. The materials we plan to use are similar to the existing deck that is there, would be sufficient sonar tubes, I believe at six, pressure-treated two-by-eights, and composite decking to match the existing decking. I think the key to this project, to make it easy, is there's only one step to the ground. It's approximately seven and a half inches when complete. Again, this would make entertaining much easier and safer for us and the people that visit us during these COVID times. Would you like to add anything?
I mean, it's just a betterment to the property, and it's not really impinging on any of the neighbors, as, you know, we're not going any further towards their property. We would really like to have it.
Okay, thank you. Jamie?
I don't have any questions, just to comment. I certainly understand your need for an expanded deck these days. We had a lot of people over, and we were all on the deck, so.
We never sat outside before.
Yeah, I think we're all doing that a lot.
We stood before you about 25 years ago when he put a sunroom on, so we sat in the sunroom. And I would like to be outside.
Lovely piece of property. The deck would be an enhancement to the current deck you have out there, and I'm certainly you'll enjoy it.
Are you going to have contractors do it? How many vehicles do you think you'll have on-site? Can you get them all in your parking space?
I'd say maximum two.
Yeah, I'd say one or two. We had people come and give us prices before we went through this process, just to kind of get an idea of everything, and a small contractor can do it.
Okay, we're going to want to make it a condition that all the vehicles be parked on-site.
Oh, absolutely. We can fit four vehicles in our driveway, and we're pretty.
It looked okay to me, yeah.
It's a small dirt road, yeah.
Right, but just, you know, the other alternative is we put a time restriction, but this is a fairly small project, and I think you can get everybody from my eyeball, and I think you're right.
Did you say time restriction? Did you say time restriction?
We do, if you can't have on-site parking, and it's an area where, as most of them are, you know, you can't really park on the street conveniently with construction vehicles. But I think you can easily get four vehicles in there. Brian?
This is my first time in that Atlanta Avenue. That's a nice little development there.
Nobody knows we're there.
Well, no, it's really, I was there earlier, and.
Someone said that last time we were here, doing whatever our last petition was. They said, "Jim Riddle Street, and nobody knows is there."
It's a hidden gem in town.
Yep.
I have, I really don't have any questions, because it seems very straightforward, and it looks fine to me.
Tim?
Yes, I have no questions either.
Dave?
I have no questions.
No, Joe? Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this petition, for or against? Hearing no one, I'll move to close the public hearing. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Second from Brian, or actually, Tim, I guess. Second from Tim, any discussion on the motion? All in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye. Okay, public hearing is now closed. I will entertain a motion on the case, please.
Case number 2021-39, Vincent S. Camilio, Life Estate in Maryland. Tucelli Life Estate have applied for a special permit to add an existing, pre-existing, to add an existing deck to a pre-existing, nonconforming, single-family dwelling. The zoning board hereby grants a special permit. The applicant is pursuant to the town, code of the town of Howard, 325, Table 2. Area regulation as set forth in MGL Chapter 48, Section 6, the property is located at 15 Helena Ave., MAP 14, Parcel A16-8, located in the RM/CV zoning district. The following conditions are going to be placed upon the property. During the life of the project, the vehicle shall be parked on the property and none on the public street or road. It is a condition of this approval that the violation of the terms and conditions of the special permit may be enforced as violation of the Howard zoning bylaw pursuant to 3 Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 7, and the Howard zoning bylaw, as these may be amended from time to time.
Could I have a second on that motion, please? Second from Tim Bailey, discussion? As in the prior case, I think this proposal is going to intensify one or more existing nonconformities. It's not creating any new nonconformities. It will certainly not be more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. It meets the requirements of both the Gale and Deidrick cases, as well as the requirements of the bylaws, so I think the board is entirely justified in granting the special permit. Anyone else? All in favor of granting the special permit?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, unanimous. Special permit granted, good luck on your project.
Thank you.
You can take this if you need.
You should take it off.
Well, you might want the.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah, you'll need it for building permit anyway.
Exactly. Good luck with the project.
I think as long as you invite us over for a drink.
Great location, right there, you know?
Right next to the golf course.
Exactly. Then a walk in a Harwich port.
Good luck.
Nobody cares.
Okay, so, come to the next case. All right, case number 2021-40, Ken and Nicole Moniz have applied for variance or, in the alternative, a special permit to construct a farmer's porch onto a pre-existing, nonconforming, single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the code of the town of Howard, 32554, Table 2. Area regulation as set forth in MGL Chapter 48, Section 10, and Chapter 48, Section 6. The property is located at 50 Main Street Extension, MAP 55, Parcel E1-1, located in the RL zoning district.
Good evening, if you could introduce yourselves, folks, please, and then present your petition?
Hello, everybody, this is Ken Moniz, and this is my wife Nicole Moniz, owners of 50 Main Street Extension. We did have a front step four by four, but it was decrepit after, since 1986, when it was built. I removed it, applied for a farmer's porch eight feet by 24, with side steps going into the backyard, and the front would be fenced, but there would be no entryway to the front yard. But we are two feet over the limit, so we're asking for a two-foot variance, so we can go ahead and proceed with a covered farmer's porch.
Okay, and why is your property nonconforming?
Yes, thank you.
I mean, it looks to me like it's a conforming.
Yeah, it's just two feet.
Okay, but the property, it is an existing, it's conforming, as far as I can see.
Yes.
So you're creating a nonconformity which requires a variance. Do you know what the requirements are for variance under the Massachusetts general law? No, okay. It's not an easy thing to get, even though it's two feet. You have to have either soil conditions, shape, topography of the land, or structures that justify the granting of a variance, meaning those things will prevent you from doing what you want to do unless you get the variance. I don't think that's the case.
There's a retaining wall there now.
Okay.
That jets out, God, at least 14 feet.
Okay.
So I don't know, other than the two foot, what would be the problem.
I guess my question is, why can't you?
Downscale it, make it six foot?
Push it back to the west side to get to two feet.
To the west side, well, there's a retaining wall there, and it's just, that's where the front door is, and I was just going to bring it right over to the gable. What I could do, I guess, is reduce it to six foot.
Yeah, what I'm suggesting, why can't you reduce the size of the farmer's porch?
Make it six by 24?
To make it whatever required, so you meet the existing setback. Then you can do it as a matter of right.
Well, we just got denied, and I did, you know, just for sheets of plywood, I went eight feet.
Well, you got denied because you would need a variance.
Right, exactly, two feet.
Right, but if you move it over, so you meet the.
Move back.
Setback, well, I guess I would say move it towards your westerly line there, so you're within that 25-foot setback, then you can do it as a right, you don't need a variance. You would meet the 25-foot setback.
We could do that.
Because I don't, I mean, I'm going to let the other board members comment, but I don't see that you've got a legal basis for a variance, because in addition to that requirement, it also has to be a substantial hardship that would be on you if the variance isn't granted, and I don't see that either. But anyway, let's see what some of the other members say. Jamie?
Unfortunately, I mean, I agree with the chairman, that's a tough thing to do, is to get a variance. You do have room to bring it back or move it over, that's probably your best option, but the variance is.
So just resubmit an application for a six by 24?
Yeah, if you did that with building, they wouldn't deny it, because you'd be within your right to do it under the, the only reason you're here is because it's gone, the extra two feet create, you're asking for a variance now.
Right.
So, I mean, that seems to me to be the best route, but it's up to you.
Al?
That property is boarded in the back by Route 6, is it not?
Yes.
And that's within less than 25 feet of your property line?
No, we just asked.
The only reason I bring that up is that that happens to be also a zone for businesses as well.
Oh, yes.
So you have high volume of traffic.
It's a mixed use.
But there's no other location, frankly, to put it on the property, other than where it's going to sit, where you're requesting it.
Yeah, the whole front of the building, you've seen it, I heard you've been out there. I mean, it's horrible in the front, and we need to replace the front exit, so I figured a farmer's porch would be the way to go.
Right, right. Is it going to be a hardship to move that, that additional feet, as was suggested by the chairman, to the west?
I can downscale it.
Okay. Brian?
Well, I, first of all, I apologize, I didn't go back in the zoning book. The lot area is .96, is the, is the zoning, is the requirement of that area a full acre?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Excuse me?
It's just under.
So, just for a while, I mean, we're, the lot area is .96. Is it, is the site nonconforming because it's not a full, it's off by .04?
Well, it says 41,000 square feet on the plan.
Oh, it does, okay.
That's what I was looking at.
But this, yeah, so the, all I'm saying is the existing, is it, the existing acres there is 41,000, which is, you know, less than a 43, whatever, for an acre. Is in fact the site nonconforming because it's under one acre?
Well, I think they need, it's 40,000 square feet.
Forty thousand?
Yeah.
I didn't look it up, so I apologize.
Yeah, it's 40,000, so that, I couldn't see that it's nonconforming, not that it makes any, well, I guess it would be a special permit, but only if it already was in the setback, which it's not.
Okay, so it's 40,000, all right.
So it's still the same problem, they need a variance.
Because the other thing is that the existing, to the right there, is a block pad, oh, actually, it's a block patio, it's not a constructed vehicle, okay. I understand. And the only other thing there is the slope of that land in the front there, if that all would consider to be any type of variance, just the way it's constructed. But you can certainly push the thing back to the, to the six-foot level, and be within code. You're right.
Tim?
All right, thanks.
I mean, I have a question about a variance, but it seems like your plan is probably going to be to push it back to the six feet. I would just say.
I would like to have the eight feet, I mean, that's why, when we get to nine, we just keep it the same and go for it, but, I mean, if it's going to be that much of an issue, we'll push it back.
So from the board's perspective, could, like you said, because of the highway, and then with the slope of the land, with the retaining wall, and that's why he wants to bring it out eight feet, would that be grounds for variance? Is that something you would go for, or no?
Well.
Well, it's all curb appeal also, trying to line things up, make it, you know, two feet, now you've got a retaining wall that's just like this, we're trying to get out to that corner of the retaining wall, have it look, you know.
Definitely, yeah.
Curb appeal, and then steps, and those steps are going towards the front of the, you know, Main Street Extension, it's going to go up to our backyard, so there'll be no access to the road.
Right, but I don't, frankly, I don't think the retaining wall is requiring you to come out to it, right?
Right. No.
No?
It's not.
No.
They can get access to the front of the house there with a six-foot access versus an eight.
Right.
That's the, okay.
Dave?
I don't have any questions.
Joe, anything?
Is the door located all the way to the furthest east spot of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Soon as you come out the door, the retaining wall's right to the left.
Okay. That was really another question I had in regards to that. Question for the board, though, if he really wanted the rest of it to be eight feet, if he was setback far enough.
Give me a little more volume.
Sure, sorry. If he, if he had that six foot where the door was, and then as he got down further away, because the way the property's angled, if he's a little further back, could he then go to eight feet for the rest of it? Or would it have to be six foot all the way across?
No, all he has to do is meet the 25-foot setback at the closest point.
Okay. So I was saying, like, if he had, if he did six foot by the door, and then, once he hit 25 feet back, could the rest of that be eight feet?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, jet it up.
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't look as nice curb appeal-wise, but just the thought.
Thank you, folks.
You know, we don't, we're not trying to give you a tough time, it's just that this is a high standard to meet, to get a variance, and this board is, you know, we follow the law on this, and.
Sure.
Tend to be strict. What I would recommend to you is that you ask to withdraw the case without prejudice, and see if you can, you know, go back and redo the plan, so you meet the 25 feet, and then apply for building permit, and they should okay it, because there will be no such. and then apply for a building permit, and they should okay it, because there will be no setback violation at that point.
Alright, we'll do that, then.
And if there's an issue, you, since we'll let you withdraw without prejudice, you come back to us, and we won't require another filing fee if you come back within, say, six months or something.
So that, that's my question, since we've paid so much money to do the initial building permit, the variance, this, where we're at today, are we gonna have to now pay again for another issue of a building permit?
You'll have to pay for the building permit, that's separate from-
Even though we originally did and got denied, and why we're here today?
Well, maybe, do they have to, no, if, no, because it was denied, right?
I think we can talk about that, um, in the building department, um, just with somebody that knows the exact answer for you. You might have to pay the seventy-dollar application fee again, um, but regardless, you're gonna have to pay for the issue of the permit. You haven't paid for that yet, just be the top of the application page.
I'm pretty sure I thought I mailed in a payment with the original building application.
You mailed in the seventy-dollar application fee, but you don't get any permit fees until after we issue the-
Alright, we're good. Thank you.
Okay, well, I'll move that. Uh, in case twenty, twenty-one dash forty, the board allow the applicants to withdraw without prejudice, and that if they refile the petition within six months, we will waive any further filing fee. Can I have a second on that motion, please?
I'll second.
Second by Al. Uh, any discussion by the board?
Not to add some confusion to it, so the credit within six months, would that be for, uh, applying for a building permit? Or is that just separate from it?
Well, that would be the fee to file with us. The building permit is, is separate. We don't have any jurisdiction over that, I'm afraid. I, I would be, personally, I'll give you the credit, but I don't have that authority, so I can't do it. So, um, all in favor of that motion? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, so you can withdraw without prejudice. Hopefully, you'll get your permit. Just get back into the twenty-five foot setback, and it should be okay.
Do you want any of these plans?
Nope, we don't have any.
Great, good luck.
Okay, so. Okay, well, let's see what the next one is here.
Case number twenty, twenty-one dash forty-one, David and Kelly Amaral through their agent Paul Muldoon of Muldoon Architects LLC have applied for a special permit to convert covered porch into habitable living space on a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard, three twenty-five, Table Two, Area Regulation as set forth in MGL forty-eight, Section Six. The property is located at five Seabreeze Ave., map six B parcel E one dash seventeen in the RH two zoning district.
Okay, sir, if you could identify yourself, please, and then present your petition.
Good evening, my name is Paul Muldoon, Muldoon Architects. I'm representing, uh, Dave and Kelly Amaral from Five Seabreeze. We're presenting a project here that, uh, the site is awfully small, and, uh, we have an existing, pre-existing, non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot in the H, uh, the RH two zoning district. The existing home is sighted ten point six feet from the westerly property line, which is the one that applies Seabreeze. Twenty-five is required in that area. And then on the northern property line, we have ten feet, and the southern property line, we have thirteen point eight, thirty is required. Our existing lot coverage at twenty-nine point eight percent will remain unchanged, and we have quite a bit of, uh, site coverage at sixty-three point one percent, which, again, will remain unchanged. Uh, our project is to transition covered porch into habitable space. This project will, will not increase any non-conforming dimensions to the, to the property lines. We're, uh, presenting a project where we're simply infilling the porch with matching materials, painted shingles, white trim, new windows with window boxes similar to what's there. We're also presenting, uh, a few alterations to the exterior with relocation of doors and, and windows along the first floor. The exist, or the, the new work will be, um, placed on top of a, a new concrete foundation with concrete face, and we'll simply adjust and, uh, attach to the roofline above. And no roofwork will happen, and, um, along with some of the window changes, we'll just patch and match with existing materials.
Okay. When did the Amarals acquire this property, do you know?
Uh, that's a good question. Uh, I'm not sure the, the, the date of that, uh, of that happening.
Okay, do you know when the, um, this patio was put in, that way in excess of the site coverage?
Before they purchased the property.
Requirements? When was it put in?
Uh, I, I don't know when the patio was put in. It was before the Amarals purchased the property.
Okay. Okay, I, I don't have any other questions. Jamie?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Uh, the only, I have no questions, except that the porch is gonna be enclosed, as I understand it. The front door is going to be removed to the north side, I think it is?
In a slide towards the north.
And you're gonna, uh, put additional windows in to make some modifications inside the house? Other than that, I have no questions.
Brian?
I do not have any questions.
Tim?
I have no questions.
No question.
Dave? Joe?
No questions.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this petition? Hearing no one, I'll move to close the public hearing. Can I have a second, please? Second from Tim. Any discussion by the board? All in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye? Okay, public hearing is closed. I'll entertain a motion in the case itself.
Uh, case number twenty, twenty-one dash forty-one, David and Kelly Amaral, through their agent Paul Muldoon of Muldoon Architects LLC, have been granted a special permit. They had applied to convert a covered porch into habitable living space on a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling. The applicant is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard, three twenty-five, Table Two, Area Regulation as set forth in MGL Chapter forty-eight, Section Six. The property is located at five CB, Seabreeze Ave., map six B parcel E one dash seventeen in the RH two zoning district.
I think probably on this one, we need the construction time limit.
Yeah.
We didn't talk about it, yeah.
It's kinda tight, but, uh-
Very tight, yeah.
Alright, uh, the, uh, the special permit is granted to the, uh, subject to the following conditions. Uh, the property is located in the congested areas, so there shall be no demolition or exterior construction or new landscaping during the period from June thirty to Labor Day in any year. Where you gonna, my question is, where are these construction vehicles gonna go down there? The property has got a driveway, but it's-
It's long and narrow. Uh, we expect that we can get a dumpster and, and maybe two vehicles on the property at the time, and we'll have to coordinate where we can park additional trucks.
Because that's extremely tight down there, and-
Extremely tight, and we, we don't expect that the project will last beyond the end of April, maybe a little bit into May. But will be, will be done far before the, the June thirtieth destruction.
The, um, during life of the project, all construction vehicles, most of them will be parked, uh, should be parked on the property and not in any public street or road. Is a condition of this approval that violation of the terms and conditions of this special permit may be enforced in violation of the Howard zoning bylaw pursuant to MGL Chapter forty-eight, Sections seven, and the Howard zoning bylaw, as these may be amended from time to time.
Can I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second by Jamie. Discussion by the board. Again, I think the proposed project, it's gonna intensify one or more existing non-conformities, but it will not create any new non-conformy, non-conformity, and it's not gonna be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. Therefore, it meets the requirements for a special permit under the bylaw and the Gale and the Deirdre cases. The only thing that concerned me with this was the increase of the patio without a special permit. Maybe it even required a variance, I don't know, but it wasn't done by this owner, so I guess we're, we'll let it go. It would be too much to try to figure out when it was done, so not happy about it, but that's the way it is. Any discussion?
I just had a, a question in regard to the addition. Um, so that's gonna create an additional bedroom?
Not an additional bedroom, just the extension of a bedroom into that space.
Oh, I see, okay, so you, there's currently two bedrooms upstairs and a bedroom downstairs?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, and I guess I should have said this at the outset, um, I'm sure you know, we didn't get any comments this time from the Board of Health, but to the extent they have any comments, you're gonna have to meet with them and resolve that. Alright, hearing no more discussion, I'll take a, a vote on the motion. All in favor of granting the applicant this special permit? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Special permit granted unanimously, sir. Yeah, you're welcome.
Would you like any of this?
Good luck with the project. Looks like a nice one.
I was gonna give this here when the cases came up, but this was the, this was the sticker.
Oh.
So it was just two comments. The projects haven't come up yet.
You want this?
I think I put it on, so it's just gonna be this thirty-six.
Okay.
Which is the next?
I've actually got two of these. You want these up? That's fine. That's where it is. Not a problem. I'm not gonna do anything with them. Thank you. Keep putting that D in there.
Okay, so. Sir.
Go ahead, Al.
Case number twenty, twenty-one dash forty-two, Alan P. and Barbara J. Rosenberg, through their agent attorney William Crowe, applied for a special permit or in the alternative, a variance to demolish, replace, pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family residence. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard, three twenty-five, fifty-four, Table Two, Area Regulation as set forth in MGL Chapter forty-eight, Section Six or Chapter forty-eight, Section Ten. The property is located at thirty-six Hiawatha Road, map six, parcel B one dash three, located in RH dash one in the zoning district.
Alright, Attorney Crowe, if you could introduce yourself for the record, please, and then present your application.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney William Crowe from Howard's Port. Good evening. Nice to see some new member, younger members, too.
Yes.
What did he say? What did I say?
I don't know how to say that.
That's not too hard, given the, the agents-
I'm thin ice, you know that, don't you?
Of the rest of us here, yes, but it is good.
Call the ball.
Oh, good.
Thought it would be safe.
Pass away at the table here. We got three younger guys over on this side.
More Irishmen. Canadian men. I have, uh, here with me tonight, um, Mr. and Mrs. Rosenberg, Alan and Barbara Rosenberg, the owners of the property, and Kathy De Meyer, who is the owner of Encore Construction. And we want to talk about thirty-six Hiawatha Road, which is located southerly of Lower County Road, as shown on the assessor's map that I submitted, near Allen Harbor. And the Rosenbergs are seeking to demolish and replace the pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family residence and the garage at thirty-six Hiawatha Road, as per the certified plot plan submitted by BSC Group and the GMT Home Design Plan, Building and Elevation Plan submitted with the petition. The new portion of the dwelling is basically on the same footprint, but it goes closer to Hiawatha Road, little, just a little bit with more structure, because they're putting on a proposed entry porch, shown on that plan there. So the existing dwelling is eleven point eight feet from the southerly lot line and seventy, excuse me, seventeen point six feet from the easterly line. So the easterly line is from Hiawatha Road. That's a twenty-five foot setback, so we're already non-conforming there. And the southerly line is eleven point eight feet, and we're supposed to be twenty feet. So we're non-conforming on both corners of that southerly side of the house. The proposed entry porch will be just a little bit closer, sixteen point six feet from the easterly line. So it's a slight intensification of structure towards Hiawatha Road. And the new portion of the dwelling to the south, excuse me, will be twelve point three feet from the southerly lot nine now, and sixteen point seven feet. But again, with some new structure, so that we are intensifying existing non-conformities within the twenty-five foot setback from Hiawatha Road and the twenty-foot setback from the southerly lot line. We're introducing new habitable space within, within those setbacks, so that requires a special permit from you folks. The existing building coverage is twenty-five percent. It will increase to twenty point, twenty-six point eight percent, but that's still below the thirty percent maximum. The site coverage existing is a little bit over the maximum, so it's pre-existing, non-conforming at thirty-six point six, where thirty-five percent is the max. And we are decreasing that just a hair to thirty-six point five. So we'd be making it a little bit more conforming. I believe the, um, reduction comes from converting an existing driveway to grass driveway and, and removing two walkways, um, existing walkways, so that it just reconfigured, it gets rid of some of that site coverage that way, but adds more structure on the site. And then a, a proposed patio that will be ground level on the west side, and still more than twenty feet from the lot line. So we're just, we're still within the building coverage, um, maximum, and we're reducing by a tenth of a percent, um, the site coverage. So we're asking that the board issue a sort of, a, 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 um, special permit this evening. There is a denial letter, um, from the, uh, Building Inspector's Office, and while I'm at it, before I forget, just so that the mailing address and the name is, is correct, Alicia, if you could make a note that Rosenberg is B E R G, and that their address is eighty-seven Blue Ridge Drive, eight, seven, and the zip code is zero six zero seven zero.
You've got that, Alicia?
Good, thanks.
Thanks. So the Rosenbergs contend that the demolition and replacement of the pre-existing, single-family residence would result in no substantial increase in noise, odors, fumes, traffic congestion, or the like, and no, it would not constitute a substantial detriment to the entire- of the like, and no, it would not constitute a substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood. They ask that you grant the special permit this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. On this one, I think we're definitely going to want the construction time restriction down here in the very congested south of 28 area. Jamie?
No questions.
Yeah? I'm a little confused. I've actually got two documents here, one of which indicates the site coverage is 41.2 feet, and the second one referred to by counsel is 36.5 feet.
Which one, which documents are you looking at?
They updated one of them?
Okay.
So...
I did not see a date.
So they updated it after the committed, so I'm not sure, maybe one day we get pulled.
I think that's probably, the BSC Group, we had to submit the final, final certified plot plan, and, which altered those percentages a little bit, so we had to submit a new page, if this is the page you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay. So the correct percentages, Mr. Donahue, if that's what you're referring to?
Yes.
A building coverage proposed should say 26.8% on that table, and it should say for site coverage, 36.5% on that table.
Yes, it does.
Okay, that's the correct one.
So that's the good one.
That's the good one.
Okay.
Sorry for any confusion. We have deadlines. Surveyors are right out straight, builders are right out straight, lawyers are right out straight, so we do the best we can to meet the deadlines.
So the sign one on June 18th is what we throw away. Do we sign June 18th versus August 26?
The one that's, if you look at, if you're asking about this, Mr. Sullivan?
So it's dated August 26.
At the top right, it says revised August 26.
August 26, yeah.
All right, down in the middle, it says June 18.
Which, which was the original one as well.
So that's why in my narrative...
And I understand.
Okay.
I understand, just to make sure.
And I believe the denial letter also refers to it as the revised, further revised dates as well.
Yeah.
Do you have anything else, Al?
I just wanted to read into the record here. We have a comment, which I'm sure counsel is aware of, in regard to the health agent regarding the septic. And I'll just read it into the record, that's all. "The septic system is located in the rear of the property. Previous health director approved the septic system for four-bedroom in 1994. From the approved three-bedroom permit to adequate GPD at the time, the passing Title V inspection was conducted in August of 19. The applicant is proposing to maintain the four-bedroom design. The patio being proposed over the septic tank is blocked on the side of the property is allowed, however, access to the tank will be required for pumping, inspection, and maintenance."
We will comply with whatever the Board of Health requires.
Okay, I just read that in.
Thank you.
Brian, anything?
No, I had the same thing at...
Tim?
I have no questions.
Dave?
I have no questions.
Joe?
No questions.
I guess there's nobody in the public that wants to speak to this case, but the applicants, the owners are here, so do you want to add anything, folks? You don't have to. They're not, not going to make you. All right, hearing, no one wants to speak, I'll move to close the public hearing. Could I have a second, please? Second from Brian. Any discussion? All in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is closed. I will entertain a motion in the case. In case number 2021-42, Alan P. and Barbara J. Rosenberg, through their agent, William, attorney William Crowe, have been granted a special permit by the zoning board to demolish and replace the pre-existing nonconforming single-family residence. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard, 32554, Table 2. Area regulation is set forth as MGL Section 6. The property is located at 36 Hiawatha, MAP 6, Parcel B 1-3, located in RH-1 zoning The special permit is granted, subject to the following conditions. There will be no demolition, exterior construction, or new landscaping during the period of June 30 to Labor Day of any year. During the life of the project, could get any construction vehicles on that property? I don't think so. I don't think so. I don't think so, no. All right. During the life of the project, there'll be no, no vehicles parked in the public way of the road. It is a condition of this approval that a violation of the terms and conditions of the special permit may be enforced as violation of the Howard zoning bylaw pursuant to MGL Chapter 48, Section 7, and the Howard zoning bylaw as these may be amended from time to time. Any questions? Second, second by Brian. Discussion by the Board. I think this project, like a number of them we've had tonight, it's intensifying one or more existing nonconformities. It is not going to create any new nonconformities, and it will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. Therefore, it meets the requirements for the issue of issuance of a special permit by the Board under the bylaw and the Gale and Deirdre cases, so I believe the Board is on good legal grounds in granting a special permit to this applicant. Any more comments from the Board? All in favor of granting the special permit? Aye?
Aye.
Special permit granted. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Doesn't bode well for the next meeting, though.
I had a few minor comments that I passed on to Lisa, and she corrected. They were not substantive, just a couple of cleanup things. So unless anyone else has any changes to the minutes of August 25th, 2021, I'm going to move that we approve them with those minor changes. Any discussion?
No.
Can I have a second on that motion? Second from Jamie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, the minutes are approved, as resubmitted to me this evening by Lisa. The only new business is to welcome our two new members, and it is good, we've got three younger guys, and that's what we really need, some younger people on the Board, because on this end, as you can see, we're not that young anymore, so.
Educated.
You did have to bring that up, right?
You know, we have to hear from the attorneys.
We're not going to be here for ever. I mean, not that we're going to die, but we might not be on the Board forever. Hope we're not going to die, but who knows?
There we go.
Haven't been to that long in my life.
Yeah, eventually, yeah, yeah. I just got word tonight, my last first cousin passed away yesterday, so, yeah. Anything from anyone? Brian?
Just a question. This has to do with, again, on Hill Lane or Avenue, is that, that's a private road, correct?
Which one?
Hill Lane.
I'm assuming it's a private road.
I, I don't know.
But, Joanne and I, I didn't bring it up, I didn't want to get in the meeting, but we have our conditions, so does anything get affected, whether it's a private road or a public road? Some of these private roads, are there, you know, the neighborhood decides, yeah, fine, park them wherever you want to park them? How does that, how does that work?
I have no idea.
Okay.
Talking to the wrong people, you gotta, you gotta go talk to the highway department. I have no idea.
Yeah, I mean, so we can still put a condition on it, whether it's a private road.
Right, exactly.
We can still put a condition on it, but I didn't know if any of these setbacks or walkways or, like in this, that particular case, they have a sidewalk that's out on the road.
Right.
And, and whether or not there's an impact, whether it's a private road or a public road in that type of situation. I was kind of wondering.
You know, we can, we've put the condition on it, but frankly, the enforcement of that's going to come, by the way, the police and the fire department.
And the building inspector.
And the building inspector, really, for our purposes, the building inspector. But if the neighbors complain, where they might not know about the zoning, the police can handle it as a police matter. If there's no parking in the neighborhood, they can handle it on that basis. The reason we put it on is because there were a lot of complaints from the neighbors with the construction vehicles.
Absolutely.
Especially south of 28.
Yeah, you get that...
Did you see the big house that's going up there that we approved? How did I forget when we approved it? Looks beautiful.
Does look nice.
Gosh, it's back, street to street. You can see how close those streets are down there. But they had it all trenched out, they were laying pipes when I went down the other day, or tubes, I guess they were, I couldn't tell what they were, air conditioning or, I don't think they, they weren't sewage, I don't think, septic.
Building.
I saw those tubes going in.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm assuming it's, it's an air conditioning unit that they, that's the...
I was assuming it's AC, but I don't know.
You know.
Could be electrical.
Mini splits, whatever, it could be a mini...
Could be electrical and conduits there, but...
I thought first might be a mini split system, they took the whole thing away from the side of the property.
Beautiful job they're doing, wow. Great job. And the other one where they have a long, narrow driveway, I forget the name of the street now already.
Quonson?
Quonson Street.
The one in back?
Seabreeze, Seabreeze, yeah, that, that's a nice little neighborhood, too. Wasn't the one behind it, the telephone pole, we just had before us last month?
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was the neighbor, but this one is one, it was the neighbor just to the right of this one, as you faced it, that was concerned about the telephone pole.
It's interesting, isn't it, the, the neighborhoods that come in, and it seems like you can see one, and then the same neighborhood, two or three other houses.
I think the message is getting out to the other neighbors, that's why they're filing.
Well, you know, it's a continual process of upgrading down there, south of 28, and they do wonderful jobs.
Oh, yeah.
But as I've always said, you can do anything with time and money, just, you know.
The only thing, the only thing that gets me on this whole thing is this pre-existing nonconforming. If the property is not pre-existing nonconforming, must the same as the, the folks that came in from 50 Main Street Extension. I just find that a little difficult to deal with, as far as rationalizing it.
Well, I...
I understand the reason behind it.
Yeah, I just wanted to see if there was a nonconformity.
Yeah.
And then, and not that, and that case would not have made any difference, because there was no nonconformity where they wanted to go into the setback.
Yeah.
That they could have triggered off of, but I just was curious why they classified it, and I think they just copied it from the agenda from some other case.
Oh, well.
Because it was, I, I don't know that, but I'm sure they must have, because it was conforming. When I looked at it about four times and could not come up with any nonconformity. And that's not the first time that's happened. But when folks come in to do it themselves, and, you know, they didn't look at the requirements for variance, and we've had that how many times? Now, this is a small project, but we've had people come in where they're going to spend, I don't know, 200, 300,000, and they don't have the right resources, and they come in before us, and that just, I find it very frustrating, that they won't hire, you know, a lawyer to come in and do it right, to make our job easier, and, and the applicant's presentation easier.
Yeah, it, you know, it made me think of that swimming pool, remember the swimming pool that came up that was off Lower County?
Yes.
They had room for it, they put, they wanted to put it on a different side. It, that, I know, it's a, it's a difficult thing, but when you apply the law to it, it's, that's...
He was claiming he wanted to get a...
Clem, the neighbor wasn't going to like it on that side.
He wasn't going to like it, I'm sorry.
Wait a minute.
It can't be, you know, hardship, because he doesn't get along with his neighbor.
Well...
That didn't work with any of us.
You know, in this case, I was, you know, I mean, I was, when I saw the point 9.6, I suddenly started, I did a brain freeze, thinking, oh, zoning's an acre, and so he's under the, you know, but I forgot it was a 40,000, but I was, I think I was trying to search for a reason for, you know, for a nonconformity.
The swimming pools, the case came before us, and, you know, it was sort of a rectangular property, and the house was here, and they had plenty of room on this side to put a swimming pool, but they wanted it over here where they need a variance.
On the setback, yeah.
And from, yeah, from the, I think it was the side yard, and the...
The septic was over there, too.
Yeah, but their rationale was because the neighbors wouldn't like it on the other side. Well, that's not, you know, under...
Is that on a, on a dead end?
Section 10. Oh, gosh.
No, I don't think it was.
I don't think so.
I don't think that property would, no.
No, not a dead end, but it, it might have been a corner, right?
It was a corner lot.
Yeah, it was a corner, but not a dead end, I think.
Yeah.
So, anyway, gentlemen, so that's what we do here. It's kind of, the special permits, most of the time are fairly easy and just flow along, but every once in a while, we have had some where there's been litigation over them. That went off of Bank Street, I can't remember, there, that little road that comes off of bank, down by the, on the beach side of bank?
Yes.
South of 28th there, that little looped street. Remember we...
They've done nothing with that property, by the way. That's unbraddock.
I'm assuming it's still in litigation, but I don't know.
I would, I would drive by it a couple of times, and there's been no...
No, yeah, I know.
No movement.
I know. When we have a litigation like that, where the Board grants a special permit, we're usually sued individually, along with the town, but the town gets counsel to represent all of us. And generally, the town's position is, it's up to the applicant and the protesting party, the plaintiff, to really carry the heavy lifting on the litigation. The town does whatever we need to, to preserve our position in the litigation, but we don't really take an active part, we don't spend any money on it, because worst case, the special permit gets thrown out, and the applicant then has to come back and start all over again. Best case, the special permit is upheld, and the applicant can do what was approved. So it's not anything the town really needs to spend any money on. We've never been sued, as long as I've been on, where the Board has denied a permit. If the Board denied a permit, yeah, that we, we'd have to spend some money on the town would to defend it.
So for the special permit on Bank Street, the Board approved it, and then who was, who's suing?
It was a flag lot, so that the two neighbors in front had put second stories on their houses.
That's a common driveway going to the...
Yeah, the fellow behind, him and his wife, wanted to put a second story on theirs, perfectly reasonable. And one neighbor here had said, oh, when they put a second story, they're going to, you know, look into our yard when we're sunbathing, and...
That was the shower.
They objected to it strenuously, but there was no rationale under which they were not entitled to a special permit. They were, under the law, and the Board granted a special permit, so one or both of the front neighbors sued them, to prevent them from putting a second story on. Most of the time, these get settled by, you know, the applicant and the offending neighbor, they work something out.
Warm cookies.
A lot of time, we never hear what the result is.
It takes more than a neighbor to be against it, it would take the whole neighborhood.
So, sorry, for Bank Street, is it, so it's one neighbor can stop the entire project? I mean.
Sure, by litigating.
Yeah, I mean. Anybody can sue anybody, for real.
Yeah, well, delay the project anyway theoretically.
How long has the project been going on for, or when did they come in from the board, I guess I should say?
No, this was at least two years ago, right?
Geez, wow.
Two or three years ago, yeah. Oh, yeah, the litigation does not move quickly.
And.
I did a lot with fortyBs and that was, there was just, everyone came in from the neighborhood all the time. I don't want an A D U coming off of my neighbor's property, it's going to lower my value. And that's like all you heard the whole time, like every single meeting.
I'll stand by, if you want to see it again.
Oh, yeah, I'm well versed now.
Yeah. But the, what the neighbors don't understand on a fortyB, it's almost impossible for this board to deny one. Okay? You've got to be able to show the denial is based on threat to the community, based on health, safety, environmental. It's a huge standard to get over. And what the board has always done is we will listen to the neighbors and we will put conditions on the applicant. They have to be reasonable and they can't be economically detrimental to really make the project uneconomic, you can't do that. But you can require reasonable conditions. So the one that's going in on West Harwich, oh, some of the neighbors were objecting, it was too close, so we require some screening of trees. And they didn't want it visible in there. It's not a historic district, but it's, I forget what they call it, some kind of protected district. So we required some screening of landscaping up front with trees to sort of break it visually. So we can do a lot of that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
When we approved the mini golf course down here on thirty-nine, one of the big things, and that wasn't a fortyB, but there was a lot of neighborhood opposition. And one of the things I really was, two things I was concerned about. The neighbors did not want the ingress egress on that side street going up to where their condos are. So we required that they block that off, which they've done. And the other big thing was to not permit any outside music at it because that's the kind of thing that the town has had all kinds of issues with down in Harwich Port with the outside music. And the applicant, they didn't intend to put outside music, they were quite happy with that, so. It's, I don't, we were talking about this last time, it's a great, great development. I mean, they did such a nice job on that. And it's really challenging, that little course, compared to what was there that I saw, it's terrific. I suspect sooner or later, they're going to come back to develop all that open space there.
I would imagine.
Yeah, so we'll see, because they'll need a variance for that, too. We'll see what happens, but. So anyway, that's sort of what have, if we have a fortyB, it'll be interesting. They're always fascinating.
Yep.
And, yeah, the neighbors never, they love fortyBs, but not this one. I've been through five or six, right, Al? You've been through a couple and just, that's the constant, they love them, but not this one.
There's always a but, you know.
Always the but.
Great concept.
Not my backyard.
But on a fortyBs, once the town has exceeded its percentage, isn't there a little more flexibility on, on the boards as far as what we can allow? I mean, a little more, don't we have a bigger hammer?
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
But there's a lot.
That, trying to meet, trying to meet that ten percent is.
Yeah, that's very, very high.
I realize that, but once, once we hit that.
Yes.
We have a little more strength and control over the project.
I mean, they're expensive.
It won't be in our lifetime.
Probably not.
Especially the old guys.
Yeah, that's true, that's true.
I saw the Harwich number recently and I don't remember, does anybody remember what it was? It was, it was in this last.
Yeah, I don't remember what it was, but I saw it too.
Five and change or something?
Yeah.
Five point eight, five point nine, so we've got a long way to go.
I don't know if any town has reached it in on the case.
Have you seen the one they put up in Yarmouth on twenty-eight?
Yes.
That affordable housing complex?
Oh, yeah.
I think it's beautiful. And they didn't want the third story, but they made the front one look, that two-story one, look really nice and it hides the three-story in the back. I think it looks great.
The one where the old motel was?
On the corner, yeah.
Yeah, it's not affordable housing, no, that's a dormitory for summer workers.
Yeah. It is, I thought they built that for affordable housing.
No, part of that is affordable housing, as far as I understand.
I thought it was for seniors.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm talking, oh, yeah, that, I'm sorry, I thought you meant the one on twenty-eight.
Oh, no, no, twenty-eight in Yarmouth.
Yes, they did a beautiful job.
Yeah, that, I mean, that looks great.
Is it all low income or just part?
I think some of it's for senior, for seniors as well. But just the whole concept was like, that probably helped their percentage a lot.
That was very nicely done, but that was a good location.
It was, yeah.
And it was a difficult location anyway.
Yeah.
Community development was highly involved in that.
I mean, that area, twenty-eight alone, is just chaos and you can't drive down.
But they want to do a project that big in a neighborhood, it's much tougher.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, if we have nothing further, Lysia, do you have anything?
She wants to go home.
All right. I will move to adjourn the meeting at eight sixteen P M. Can I have a second, please? Second, any discussion? No, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, meeting adjourned.